Good afternoon. This meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order. Yeah, please mute your cell phones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny... Could I have some quiet over there, please? Thank you. Really? Really? So, I will tell a story as soon as we get an exec. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream and the CUNY Board of Trustees website. I now move that this meeting convene in executive session pursuant to Article 7, Section 105 of the Public Officers Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel investigations and litigation. May I have a second? Those in favor? We are in executive session. The board will reconvene in public session following this executive session. Those in favor? All right, we're back in public session. On June 20th, 2023, the Board of Trustees convened an in-person Bronx Borough and Public Hearing at Hostos Community College. Nineteen people testified in person and one via Zoom. Students and professors from various CUNY colleges spoke positively about the CUNY India Study Abroad Program. Participants spoke about the environmental research projects they conducted with the Indian Institute of Technology at the Bombay and Delhi campuses. Students from Hostos Community College and Bronx Community College shared their experiences at both community colleges, including the excellent support that they have received and the encouragement to continue their education. Two individuals from the Graduate Center spoke about the need for more resources and support for graduate and doctoral students as well as ongoing governance issues between the Graduate Council and the Graduate Center Administration. Additionally, several students and faculty from a group called CUNY for Palestine spoke in favor of the CUNY Law School commencement speaker. Twelve testimonies were submitted, and as always, the written testimony has been shared with the board and the chancellery as well as posted to the trustees' website. Vice Chair Sandra Wilken and I joined trustee Kim and trustee Lenaris Garcia at the University Supplier Diversity Conference on May 24th, which is always an incredible opportunity for MWBEs, SDVOBs, and small business contractors to learn how to do business with the university, network with decision-makers from the colleges and other agencies, and meet other consultants and contractors. CUNY has a long tradition of and commitment to embracing and supporting diversity in all aspects of what we do. The conference embodies our deep commitment that the doors of the university are open now and moving forward. There are a couple of things before we get into the rest of our agenda for today. Just a couple of things I'd like to say, points of privilege as the chair. Two things. Number one, and we will be doing a resolution later for our outgoing colleague, trustee Ferrer. Freddie has been, as I sat down to try and figure it out, has been a personal friend for close to 40 years. Not quite, but we're getting close to it. And he is somebody who has always had my back. I've always tried to have his. But when you talk about somebody that I would trust with my life, Freddie Ferrer is that person. He is a fabulous public servant. And if you want to talk about the most, the worst thing that you could do, the worst thing you can undertake, the toughest, the most thankless, it is being at the MTA. Freddie was the chair and served as the CEO of the MTA to try and right the ship over there. He is somebody who, as I said, is just a great friend, a great public servant. Not the Bronx. New York City, New York State, and the Bronx are better because of him. And we were fortunate to have him on this board. This is his last meeting. I will miss you, my friend, even though we're still having dinner. He's gonna have to sit through this again. There's a resolution for him later. Second, and another point of personal privilege. Yesterday, New York State lost one of... You talk about the MTA. New York State lost, wow, someone who is, you just have to call him a New York treasure, and that is Richard Ravitch. Dick was another friend of mine, and I count him as a mentor. He and his wife Kathy, and my wife and I, Elsie, and have dinner and do a number of things together. He is just somebody I have learned so much from over the years. I couldn't let it, and no, he wasn't tied into CUNY, even though Dick had an opinion on CUNY and advice on how to make CUNY better on a regular basis. That's who he was. He always thought of how to improve situations. New York Times did his obituary today. I suggest everybody read it. It is, when you talk about a lifetime spent in public service and the things that he didn't have to do, those are the things he did to be able to make New York a better place for everyone. So it is, I couldn't, and the one thing I will miss about Dick. Dick had an opinion on everything. And whether you agreed with him, and I was some of the best debates I've ever had with Dick Ravitch. He had a great outlook and, as I said, a belief in how to make things better. I will miss him. He was just a great man. So let me offer my condolences to his wife Kathy, his children, his grandchildren. New York is a better place because of Dick Ravitch. With that, this evening, we have the privilege of hearing from some of our student parents. Vice Chancellor Denise Maybank will introduce the two students joining us today from Bronx Community College Lehman College, Johanna Mercedes, and from New York City Tech, Johanna Cibri.
But thank you so much. So, did you know that our youngest students are not teenagers? You might think so, but they're not. They're not even elementary school age. They are six months old. Those are our youngest students. We basically operate seventeen early childhood centers, and we'll have an eighteenth coming online to make certain that we can offer services to more than those we already serve at the six-month age. But we have 622 of the most adorable children you will find anywhere. Can I get my video so you can see some of those faces? Today, we bring before you our student parents to share the impact of CUNY and campus-based childcare on their lives, their dreams, and their destiny. You will hear from Jesus's mother, Joanna Cibri, Jeremiah's father, Makoko Megaya, and Bryson's mother, Joanna Mercedes, in that order.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. My apologies, that music was very moving. My name is Joanna Cibri. I am a returning student parent to the New York City College of Technology. I am majoring in mechanical engineering technology and doing a minor in gender sexuality studies. To begin, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share my experience on how I'm navigating through these childcare systems. I started college in the fall of 2015 with an entry fee for my immigration status. The only support that I had at the moment was the ASAP program. But even then, I realized that, sorry, my immigration status was the main reason I couldn't continue. My immigration status took a toll on me, and I realized I didn't have the same opportunities as my classmates. So I couldn't continue. I also didn't have the financial assistance to continue. Four years later, years after keeping my head down thinking, I welcomed my boy, my baby boy, Jesus, in January 2020. My world changed. Out of all the titles that I would get have, being a mother, to me, is the one that changed the most. Like I said, Jesus was born at the beginning of COVID-19 pandemic in the city, so we had to quarantine for three years. As soon as the COVID-19 regulations were lifted, I needed to find a care, a childcare center for him so I can provide for my family and be financially stable. Thank you. One of my coworkers suggested center that her daughter is enrolled, and they said that they have an amazing two-year program. And I went and I required more information, and so I went for a visit. My partner and I, with my son, we went. I was greeted by one of the teachers that instantly told me that we could not visit the classroom that he was going to be in because there was a child waiting to be picked up. I understood, and I said, that's no problem. And then we were allowed to visit another classroom that he was not going to be in that had two children waiting to be picked up. Throughout this touring, my son was not acknowledged, and he was not greeted. I continued to be respectful, and I understood that probably she was overwhelmed. In the process, I had asked her if there was anybody that spoke or understood Spanish, because that was my son's main language. Instantly, she told me, no, that there is nobody that speaks or understands Spanish. But if I want, I can write the words that he says the most with the translation and put it in his backpack for them to know. I said, okay. That made me feel like a bad mother, like I wasn't teaching my son the correct language so he can be prosperous. So I continued to ask about the prices, and she did not want to give me a price. She said, um, and then I continued to ask again. Can you, I persisted, I said, how much would it be? And she told me a price that was beyond my budget, not the price that my coworker was paying. So I said, okay. Throughout the whole process, I heard me nor her tone change when I asked for the language accessibility, and it changed from a nice, calm, and welcoming to a very annoying tone. And that made me feel very discriminated. It made me feel like she was discriminating against my son because it felt like, because he didn't understand English, they didn't want him in there because that meant that they had to do extra work. So as a first-time mother, I felt very discouraged. So I left. I decided that I wasn't going to go back to work and just struggle for a little bit. But luckily, one day, one afternoon, I came across the New York State Association Scholarship, and in there I found information about the Joseperal de Dream Act. And worse than that, sorry, and worse than I expressed how happy I was that I was going to be able to return to school. And even as a mother, I knew that it was going to be hard. And then I remembered that when I was taking my summer semester classes of 2016, I saw posted that said, "CUNY offers childcare in campus." I lew went to City Tech's childcare system, and then I found a childcare at CUNY in the website, and I found out Children's Center. I instantly started making calls because I knew, like, now I had the opportunity to go back to school, even as a mother. So when I looked through all the information, I called, and I got all the information that I needed. I planned my visit. Everyone was so welcoming, very understanding, especially knowing that my son was in quarantine for two years. He had trouble socializing. So when I went to visit, it was very hard. He was crying most of the time. He did not want to greet anybody, and the teachers that were so welcoming, they allowed him to express his feelings. They said, that's okay, that's not an issue. Let him get comfortable, and then we can start asking questions. And then I said, thank you. They even allowed my baby brother, my niece, and my sister to come home, calm him down, sorry. And when I was done asking all the questions that I had, my son was already playing comfortably with the train set that they had in the classroom. Then I, one of the teachers said to me, you know, mama, don't worry. Your son, I am a mother myself, and I will treat your son like my own. I will not sugarcoat if anything happens. And that brought relief to my worries. I knew that he was going to be in the right hands, especially because when she was speaking to me, I saw another teacher trying to speak to him in Spanish. They don't speak Spanish properly. They don't know the language. But I was so relieved that they were even trying because he felt comfortable enough to respond to them. And thanks to them, I am now able to do a minor in the gender and sexuality studies because I have that peace of mind. I know that my son is just levels away. And whatever questions that I have, I know I can reach out to them. I can send them a text. I can call them and say, hey, how is my son doing? And I know that because I've done that. The first weeks, I did that all the time. The Superior Society was taking a toll on me, but I made it through because the center was always there for me. Especially as a returning student parent, I had needed extra help because I had to relearn everything and navigate everything again. And the center was just there, not only for me as a parent, but also as a student. They allowed me to stay later to practice, to study for my exams, and I was very, very thankful for them. And if I can leave you with one message today, it would be that, I'm sorry, I wrote that down because I knew, I needed to say that. That I hope that you can see how proper, affordable, and intentional childcare service can benefit a person's life and change a family's life as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Makoko Megaya. Actually, from Ghana, and I'm so glad to be here with all of you. I would say I'm very excited to actually meet Ms. Sonia, who's the director for the ELC program with the daycare program at LaGuardia College. I remember when my wife was pregnant, we were trying to actually find out what we was going to do with the income coming in, because I was working three, four jobs. And then my mother-in-law looked at me and said, are you guys just gonna keep having kids? And I laughed, and she said, you laughing? I said, I'm thinking about what I'm going to do. And I remember we went to Georgia, because she lives down there. So when we came back, we spoke about it, and I said, you know what? You should go back to school first. She said, no. I said, you should. She said, why? I said, you're the smart one. So she decided to enroll at LaGuardia College. She graduated as a professional therapist assistant. And then when she was over there, actually, we find out, when we find out about the daycare system over there, I mean, the daycare service that they provide, we look into it, it was great. And we actually admire all the staff, the teachers, everybody was so good. And then I was still working three jobs, so I decided to go for my GED. And I was also trying to go to school, I mean, enroll in college as well. So after she enrolled herself, after she enrolled at the school, I'm sorry, after she enrolled at the school, my oldest son, who is nine, nine, was over there at that time, was really welcome. All the staff, they were so great. They always go to us, we stay in touch, up to date. And then I finished my GED around, I think, 2016, I'm sorry, 2016, I finished, I got my GED from there. And after that, I enrolled into the college. I'm majoring as an LPN. I'm trying to be the LPN to the RN program. I'm sorry, my English. And then since we planned that anytime, after we have the second child, that's when Awu enrolled in school. So after we have the second one, who's Jeremiah, is now at the daycare with me all the time. Whenever I'm going to school, he always go with me. It's been well taken care of as well. So with my experience, we took him also over there based on the outcome that we had from the first child. So I always speak to most of my colleagues at my job, and then I always tell them to always try to not limit themselves. They can always do better. And most of them tell me they have two, three, four kids. And I say, there's always a solution. There's someone that you can always talk to. There's always someone who can always assist you. You just have to find out, talk to people, reach out, and they can always help you. And also, most of them are, like I said, I always tell them they smarter than me. So they should go to LaGuardia College or any of the CUNY colleges because they have the best daycares. And then it works for me, so I know for sure that it will also work for them as well. I know most of the staff, as well as the security on campus, is one of the, the safety of the child is very important to me. Whenever I'm on campus with him, anytime something happen, they always reach out to me. And also, going to the same school with me, as a father and a son, we always interacting, reading on the train. And then my oldest one, I remember, he was, when he was over there, before he left, he left LaGuardia College, the daycare center, it was because of the program that he was able to accept, to be accepted into one of the gifted talent schools, you know? And always, he's always trying to correct my English in the house. And then, yeah. So the second one, my second, excuse me, my second child, who is over there at the moment, always liked the teachers even more than me. Whenever I drop him before, I remember the first week, he didn't want to stay. And after he discovered, I don't know what he discovered about the teachers, and anytime I drop him, he just like run away from me. And then when I try to pick him up early, he's always, I know. So I just have to leave him. And they are like, no, we can give you some steady time, go in steady and come back. Because he doesn't want to go with you. I say, okay. So I just want everybody here to know that the daycare system has actually been a good, has impacted my life in a good way. And also, it's also something that I'll recommend for anyone who is also trying to go to school. Like I said, I tell my friends at all times, and they want. And also, I'll still thank Ms. Sonia, the director, for the program as well. And I know my wife would love to be here. And I know she would have taken all the credit for the English and everything because I'm not, yeah. So, but she said, she, I should also speak on her behalf. She really loved the school, and she always liked to go over there and visit, not just because of the daycare, but because of the staff. We are like, they are family, actual family, and you can feel it. We don't just speak, just make things up. But I'm speaking from my heart. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here today. This is an amazing opportunity to be able to share our experience as student parents. My name is Johanna Mercedes, and I am a Bronx Community College alumni who graduated in June 2016. Then I transferred to Lehman College where I obtained my bachelor's degree in psychology, minoring in early childhood education. I also graduated from Lehman this June 1st with my master's degree in early childhood education. And this concludes... And this concluded my journey in obtaining my New York State teacher certification. Everything started when I had to leave my country to come to this country at the age of 14 in 2009. Coming to this country has been a challenge, not knowing any English, getting to know different cultures, going to a new school, and not having any friends. All these challenges did not stop me from learning some English during my first year in high school. I was able to communicate with peers and teachers and complete assignments individually. Through this journey, I learned how to be more independent, focus on my academics, and I became more motivated to further my education and go to college. My whole life, I had supportive teachers that today I can say gave me that push I needed to be better and accomplish my goals in life. Because of these teachers, I'm standing in front of you today. As I graduated high school, I thought I was ready to go to college and obtain a college degree. But guess what? According to the educational system, my English was not good enough to start college right away. So I had to enroll in a program called Summer Intensive English Language Program. This program was available at Bronx Community College, and its goal was to support multilingual learners and improving their language skills. When I really thought I was done, guess what again? Johanna did not pass her CUNY assessment for English and math proficiency. So this means that I had to enroll in another program called CUNY Start. I was enrolled in this program until I was able to pass the reading, writing, and math exams. At the end of this program, I was then able to enroll in Bronx Community College to obtain my social degree in education. I am grateful that I graduated from BCC in 2016 within the two-year frame. I excelled during my last semester internship, and this gave me an opportunity to start working as a teacher assistant in a classroom while continuing my education at Lehman College. My love for teaching motivated me to enroll at Lehman College to obtain my bachelor's degree in psychology, minoring in early childhood education. I never thought I was getting this far, but every step of my journey showed me that I was built to do much more in life. When I started my master's degree at Lehman College, my son Bryson was only five months old. It was a hard decision that I had to make if I wanted to continue obtaining a better education because now I had a son that would look up to me. As I started, I was only able to enroll in one class because I had to work full-time and didn't have enough support to take care of my son. It was a bittersweet moment because I wanted to continue school, but I also wanted to stay home with my son. I enrolled for only one class within a few semesters until my son was able to enroll in the Children's Center at Bronx Community College. My son attending this center allowed me to enroll in more classes and finally finish my degree on time. How could I have graduated without having a consistent childcare where my child could attend? CUNY childcare is one of the major reasons why I graduated with my master's degree. As a single mother working full-time and attending school, I can say that I went to my classes with my heart at peace, knowing that my child was well taken care of. The Bronx Community College Children's Center has provided my son with unforgettable and meaningful experiences that he will carry with him for the rest of his life. Having access to CUNY childcare allows us, especially single parents, to focus on our education. When my son started attending the Children's Center, I was concerned about his speech development, and I even got him evaluated for speech. By the time this evaluation was done, it was determined that he was developing well so I could say that within the first two weeks, my little boy was talking more because of the support he received at the Children's Center. He has been developing his language skills, making positive relationships, and extending his learning. My son is a clear example of what a high-quality childcare could do to a young child. I will forever be grateful that my son's development was supported by amazing teachers and staff at the BCC Children's Center. Not only did they support him, but they also support me in becoming a better parent and learning how I can also support and extend his learning outside of the classroom. As we go to school, we look for childcare, but not just any childcare. I was looking for high-quality childcare that I knew would support me in accomplishing my educational and personal goals, but will also support my child's development. The holistic approach used by the CUNY childcare has given me the necessary support to raise a smart and creative young child, young boy that loves school. He has developed... He has developed this interest in learning and an amazing personality that will take him far in life. As a student parent and as a New York State certified teacher, I can say that CUNY childcare is the main reason why student parents are able to accomplish their educational and personal goals. When you're a parent, your child comes first. So if your child is well taken care of, then you can focus on working toward your goals. The support I receive from this CUNY childcare impacted my sons and my life in many ways. This is what motivates me to become the caring teacher that our students and families need to succeed in life. I consider myself a lifelong learner and this is not the end for me. I will continue extending my education as a CUNY student at Lehman College where I'll be enrolling again for the full semester to obtain my advanced certificate in special education. This will better prepare me to support diverse learners and families as they come into my classroom. All in all, as we continue to support our young learners and student parents, let's remember that we all can do so much one way or no, one way or another. To contribute to the education, a child learns in a high-quality classroom that provides a relevant and meaningful experience with extracurricular activities and having parental involvement. But for this to happen, fundings I need. More fundings are needed for CUNY child care to continue doing what they do best, which is to support student parents and their young children who are our future. Thank you.
Around the table, you have been gifted with original pieces created especially for you by CUNY thriving artists. You've heard of the starving ones, these are the thriving artists. And if you did not receive yours, not everything was delivered on time. So those of my colleagues who do not have something in front of them, you will receive something for it. There is a Chinese proverb that says, if you are planning for a year, sow rice. If you are planning for a decade, plant trees. If you are planning for a lifetime, educate people. And that is what we are here to do, that is what we are doing. And it's making a difference for their children, for their parents, for families and for communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Um.
The twenty seconds video you're supposed to see, sorry.
Go ahead.
Don't you ever go. Just never go.
That was so cute. Thank you and thank our students. Thank you so much. Uh, let me now turn to the chancellor for his report.
Can I go at the end?
No, you always want to follow the students.
This is, uh.
It's always tough.
Uh, thank you, Chair Thompson. And I, I'd also join you in, in the words of condolences for the loss of, uh, our friend Dick Ravitch, a, a friend of the university. And, and actually he was also very active and involved in a school of journalism. He was a donor, uh, and very supportive of the programs there. So, uh, a great loss to, to the city and to us. Um, even with those sad news, I am glad to be with you today as we arrive the start of the summer. There's a lot of exciting things that have happened since the last time we met. Um, I am delighted to report that thanks to the leadership of this board, our city and state-funded contracts with businesses owned by minorities, women and service-disabled veterans have increased significantly to more than forty percent of applicable expenditures and surpassed state benchmarks. This is a major step in our pledge to expand opportunities for smaller and more diverse suppliers. Chair Thompson, Vice Chancellor Wilkins, some other board members and I uh, discussed CUNY's progress at the recent N W E procurement conference with the chair mentioning his remarks. And we are very proud that we have over a thousand small business owners, uh, joining us there. So thank you to all who participated in organizing that. And our appreciation and thanks to Governor Hokel for supporting our efforts to promote diversity in procurement. Governor Hokel is also supporting CUNY's efforts to grow Centro, the Center for Puerto Rican Studies. Just before the National Puerto Rican Day Parade, early this month, the governor announced a twenty million dollar investment in Centro, which would allow the center to expand its library, archives and exhibition space in East Harlem. I was thrilled to help kick off the parade with Governor Hokel, Congresswoman Nida Velazquez, two CUNY alums, Congressman Adriano Espallat and New York State Attorney General Tish James. And also we were joined by trustee Cortez Vasquez, among many other city leaders. Another highlight of the parade season was yesterday's pride parade, uh, where hundreds of staff, uh, faculty and students came together from all different campuses, showing the energy and love for our L G B T Q I plus community. We also had the pleasure of celebrating with our city partners recently. Last week, Mayor Adams, Public Schools Chancellor David Banks and I announced the expansion of a tech career pipelines for New York City students. Google will be the first tech anchor partner for an expanded cohort of future-ready N Y C schools, which will provide career-connected opportunities that include college-credit-bearing courses taught by Lehman faculty. Google is also an inaugural partner of our newly-launched CUNY Tech Equity Initiative, a private-public partnership that will expand the number of CUNY students considering and ultimately succeeding in technology careers. Over the next three years, we're looking to give twenty-five thousand CUNY students access to the tools, technology, curricula and employer connections and connect five thousand students to pay tech internships. We're also looking to increase the number of Black, Hispanic and women students who major in computer science. As I have said, metrics matter, matters and I thank Lauren Anderson for helping to lead the charge on this important program. When we talk about this university's equity-driven mission, the CUNY School of Medicine is a critical contributor. First, the school educates a diverse group of students, many of whom are themselves members of underserved communities. Then, when their doctors, sorry, three in four will return to those very communities to provide needed medical services and eradicate longstanding systemic inequities. I am therefore pleased to report that the CUNY School of Medicine recently received its full accreditation from the Liaison Committee on Medical Education, which is the recognized accrediting authority for M D programs in the U S and Canada. Only around a hundred and fifty schools hold this status. And we congratulate the dean, Dr. Carmen Green, and city, uh, college president Vincent Boudreau uh, for their excellent work to fulfill the school's mission. Now, for something that I am particularly excited about, uh, on Thursday, this coming Thursday, I will be attending the ribbon-cutting celebration for the new Louis Armstrong Center. I've been looking forward to this since helping break ground on the project in twenty seventeen, when I was the president of Queens College and Armstrong's Archives Warehouse on our campus. This state-of-the-art center will give the archives a permanent home and also provide performance and exhibit space so we might continue to promote Armstrong's legacy and amplify the work of the Louis Armstrong House Museum. We are grateful to our city and state leaders, including Governor Hokel and Mayor Adams, for funding this expansion. And earlier today, I visited also in Queens George College for the groundbreaking ceremony for the new four-hundred-meter track and field. It will be the only N C double A level track and field in southeastern Queens and will, and will also be open to local families and community groups. So it's another great example of what I mean when I say that our campuses are anchor institutions and critical to the lifeblood of the neighborhoods that they serve. We are grateful to Board President Richards and the New York City Council of New York State for helping to fund this important project. A few weeks ago, I spoke at the reception for the Class of Twenty Twenty-three Valedictorians and Salutatorians, which was held at John Jay College. We heard from our own U S S, uh, chairperson and trustee Salemato Dumboria, as well as John Jay College valedictorian Sarah El Shaheer, who is the fir, who is a first-generation American born to parents from Egypt and Morocco and has been offered a full-time position at the F B I. It was inspiring to be among these leaders and scholars who have so much potential to change the world for the better. As usual, our students continue to win impressive awards. Here are just a few highlights. Three of our students won Jack Kent Cooke undergraduate transfer scholarships, a prestigious award that can fund up to fifty-five thousand for each recipient and is given to just sixty students in the country. We also recently named eight winners of the Jonas A. Salk Scholarship, which is given to CUNY graduates who have been accepted to medical schools or biomedical science graduate programs. Also, two CUNY students were each selected to receive the inaugural fellowship on immigrant integration, a program at the Rockefeller Institute of Government. Congratulations to all these winners. Last month, I had a special opportunity to tour the Museum of Jewish Heritage with a small group of our students from Hillel, CUNY's interfaith group, as well as students who went to the Middle East to study abroad. The Holocaust: What Hate Can Do is an exhibition with features, powerful testimonies and objects donated by survivors and their families. Their stories resonated deeply with me and I am so pleased that our CUNY arts program will be partnering with the museum to offer more leading opportunities this fall. At the end of last week, I gave the opening remarks at the Association of College and University Educators National Higher Education Teaching Conference. Co-hosted with CUNY, the conference key goal was building a shared understanding of the importance of putting, of putting quality teaching at the center of educational equity and student success. CUNY also received a conference leadership award for our work in advancing the importance of effective teaching for deeper learning. A few weeks ago, I was honored to receive a Foreign Policy Association Medal in recognition for CUNY's work educating students in international affairs and foreign policy. We were also praised for enhancing global literacy, expanding students' understanding of varied issues and for helping international students come to the U S. I share with everyone at CUNY who works tirelessly to expand the knowledge of this field through teaching, research and public engagement. And a reminder to get out and vote if you haven't done so already. I am thrilled that CUNY is once again helping New Yorkers fulfill their civic duty. We have ten campuses that hosted early voting sites and four will be welcoming primary voters tomorrow. I also want to take this opportunity, joining our chair, to recognize trustee Fernando Ferrer, uh, whose term expires at the end of the month. I am honored to have served with you in this board. Uh, he shares, uh, birthright with my mother and my grandparents. And, uh, I would miss you in the committees of fiscal affairs, in governance and in the many search committees that you served throughout the years. We have greatly benefited from your experience and leadership and thank you for your service. I also want to welcome, uh, Barbara, Barbara Lee Daimonstein Espilvogel, who has recently been appointed to the board by Governor Hokel. We look forward to welcoming her in person to the new CUNY family at the next board meeting. And of course, congratulations to our board chair and vice chair, who were just reappointed to another seven-year term. Look forward to continue working with you if you will have me.
We'll talk about nothing.
La, la, last week, we had the opportunity to celebrate and say farewell to Bronx Community College President Tomas Isakinevy, Hunter College President Jennifer Rab and Senior Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations Pam Silberblatt. Collectively, they have given forty-five years of service and leadership to CUNY and we wish all of them the best of luck in their next ventures. I also want to welcome Ann Kishner, Dean Emerita of Macaulay Honors College, back to CUNY as the interim president of Hunter. She has an impressive track record of more than fifteen years in senior roles at CUNY and we are lucky to be able to draw on her wide range of experience during this time of transition. And finally, we just wrapped up another successful commencement season. The numbers won't be official until later this year, but we estimate that CUNY will have as many as fifty-three thousand graduates for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three academic year. So I just wanted to share, yeah, we can clap to that. And, um, with that, I wish all of you a happy Fourth of July and look forward to reconvening with all you again when we finish the summer and come back in August. Thank you so much.
Thank you, chancellor. Um, let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Item number one, the draft meeting, the regular board meeting of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'd like to move item one. May I have a second? Any discussion on the minutes? All right, let's now vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved. Item number two, the Committee on Finance and Administration. I call on Committee on Finance and Administration Chair Fernando Ferrer to present and move the following items.
Mister Chairman, committee, uh, considered the following on its, at its meeting on June fifth. Item two A is a resolution to authorize the fiscal year twenty twenty-four university operating and capital budget allocations. The resolution requests the board adopt the operating budget allocations by campus and program for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the amount of four-point-two-nine billion dollars. Resolution also requests the board adopt capital budget allocations for projects authorized by the City University Construction Fund to address critical maintenance, infrastructure and programmatic initiatives supporting the university's mission. The budgets reflected in the allocations are based, are based on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four New York State enacted budget and the fiscal year twenty twenty-four New York City executive budget. Accordingly, Mister Chairman, I move approval of item two A.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Yes.
I have a question. If the city adopts, actually adopts the budget in the next several days, hopefully there will be money beyond what's in the executive budget. How will that money be dealt with in terms of our oversight of it?
If it's a material amount, we'll come back to the board and ask for, for it to prove additional allocation.
Okay. And I'd just like to make one point on this. I've made it before. The state budget continues not to provide, to pick up the collective bargaining costs, which means our increased collective bargaining costs have to come out of other funds which affect other programs. And I would hope again next year, I urge, we have to make reimbursement for our collective bargaining funds expenses part of our budget request as a major request.
Here, here.
Any other discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item two B is a resolution to authorize a campus network modernization project. University seeks to modernize networks of sixteen campuses, um, and the central office by rep, by replacing outdated equipment that is or will be at the end of life by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Approximately fifty percent of the Cisco campus network devices are at or beyond their published end of life. University seeking approval from the board to authorize the acquisition of network equipment, bundle software licenses with, uh, support and implementation services through the dormitory authority in an amount not to exceed thirty-six million, thirty-six billion, three-hundred thousand dollars under the terms of the Cisco O G S contract, using existing allocated capital funds. Mister Chairman, uh, I accordingly move item two B.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item two C is a resolution to engage consulting resources to enhance admissions, enrollment and financial aid systems. University acquires qualified consulting resource firms to provide a rapid implementation of several modifications and enhancements that should be made to the CUNY recruitment, admissions and financial and aid systems to attract students and enhance the student experience. University issued a request for quotes on March eighth, twenty twenty-three pursuant to the G S A contract, uh, in which twenty-two vendors responded and were evaluated by a committee comprised of central office personnel. Um, the, uh, and the evaluation committee selected seven vendors based on qualifications, technical skills and availability of developers and programs that the vendors can make available to the university. University seeking approval from the board to authorize contracts with. University seeking approval from the board to authorize contracts with INI Software, Intermedia Group Inc., Optima Global Solutions, Raj Technologies, SVAM International, LTech Federal, and Unique Comp Incorporated to provide software developers and programmers to make expenditures and purchases under the contract not to exceed 4.2 million dollars of nonrecurring strategic funds received in the 2023 New York State enacted budget for services to be completed by June thirty, 2024. Accordingly, I move approval of item 2C.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2D is a resolution to authorize a contract with United Neighborhood Houses of New York to develop the First Impressions Youth Justice Initiative at CUNY School of Law. CUNY School of Law received a million-dollar New York State grant to establish First Impressions Youth Legal Collaborative Initiative, first-of-its-kind program administered by CUNY Law to provide cities' most marginalized middle school and high school youth with the community-based program to focus on creating a positive impression of the justice system. CUNY Law anticipates receiving a million dollars each year for three years and anticipates paying five hundred thousand dollars to United Neighborhood House each year for three years. CUNY Law is seeking approval to enter into contract with UNH to develop and implement community-based program for middle school and high school students for a three-year term at a cost not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars per year for three years with a total not to exceed amount of 1.5 billion dollars. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2D.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2E is a resolution to authorize a contract extension with Blackboard Incorporated to ensure ongoing access to the learning management system and during a phase transition to a new LMS platform. In March 2021, the university's board authorized the contract renewal extension with Blackboard from December 2022 to December 2023 to ensure ongoing access to the LMS and enable completion of a request for proposals. University seeking approval to extend the term of the contract for the period of December nineteen, 2023 to December eighteen, 2024 for a not-to-exceed amount of 2,876,536 dollars, with an option to further extend the contract from December nineteen, 24 to December eighteen, 25 for a period, rather, for a not-to-exceed amount of 3,020,363 dollars and to, in addition, and to, in addition, funding, adding analytics for the period July one, 2023 to December eighteen, 2024 for a not-to-exceed amount of 230,947 dollars, with an option to extend this amendment for a period of twelve, eighteen, twenty-four to twelve, eighteen, twenty-five for a not-to-exceed amount of 122,152 dollars. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2E.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2F is a resolution to authorize the university to spend up to 1,379,273 dollars with Google LLC effective for the term July one, 2023 through November thirty, 2023 to place digital advertisements. University seeks to increase paid digital advertisement and marketing campaigns on Google to support the efforts of the university and its colleges in increasing enrollment and highlight its local and national reputation by increasing awareness of the university's pivotal role in the economic vitality of New York City. University seeks approval to make expenditures and purchases not to exceed 1,379,273 dollars effective for the term July one, 2023 through November thirty, 2023 through one or more purchases through the university's Office of Procurement and subject to the review and approval from the Office of the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2F.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
In a similar item, item 2G is a resolution to authorize the university to spend up to 1,178,000 dollars with Meta and its related entities, Facebook and Instagram, effective for the term July one, 2023 through November thirty, 2023, to place digital advertisements for the same reasons as with Google. The university is seeking approval to make expenditures and purchases not to exceed 1,178,000 dollars effective for the term July one, 2023 through November thirty, 2023 through one or more digital internet purchases through the university's Office of Procurement, subject to the review and approval of the Office of General Counsel for Legal Services. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2G.
Do I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 2H is a resolution to authorize a contract renewal with Navitas New York LLC to provide, to continue to provide the International Student Success Program at Queens College. The university, on behalf of Queens College, entered into a contract with Navitas for the purpose of developing an international student success program. The terms of the contract are, the term of the contract is from January twenty-two, 2019 to through January twenty-one, 2024, with an option to renew for one additional five-year term. International students currently involved in the program are expected to pay a total of 10 million dollars in tuition over the years following their completion of the program. The university is seeking approval to renew the contract with Navitas for a not-to-exceed amount of 8 million dollars annually for a period of five years ending on January twenty-one, 2029, with a total not-to-exceed amount for the renewal period of 40 million dollars. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2H.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2I is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The report reflects selected ECP actions that have been entered by the colleges into the CUNY system of record between March twenty-seven, 2023, and May five, 2023. The report contains a total of twenty-eight ECP actions, including seven interim appointments, eleven regular appointments, three salary increases, and seven resignations. Increases are typically approved to address retention, a widening of scope, and reclassification or promotion. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2I.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2J is a resolution to appoint Danny Lambrose as Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Affairs at Gutman Community College. Dr. Lambrose currently serves as interim Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Affairs at Gutman, and is over fifteen years of increasing professional experience in leadership, academic advisement, enrollment management, crisis management, culturally responsive leadership, curriculum design, and curriculum development. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2J.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2K is a resolution to appoint David C. Baluarte as professional school senior associate dean for academic affairs and chief academic officer at the CUNY School of Law. He has ten years of progressive administrative and leadership experience in higher education, and is associate dean for academic affairs. He supported and advanced the curriculum for all academic programs, was responsible for faculty and adjunct support, and managed budget for academic programs. Accordingly, I move approval of item 2K.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2L is a resolution to appoint Phyllis Curtis Tweed as provost and vice president for Academic Affairs at Queensborough Community College. She has twenty-five years of progressive administrative and leadership experience in higher education, including positions as principal of the Berkeley Institute in Bermuda, dean of academic affairs and student services, and subsequently dean of dean for arts, design, and humanity at the Orchard Bridge Campus of Oakland Community College, Michigan, and various roles at CUNY's Medgar Ever College, including assistant provost for student success and as interim associate provost. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2L.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2M is a resolution to appoint Teresa McGovern as professional school senior associate dean for academic and student affairs at CUNY Graduate School of Public Health. She has more than twenty-three years of experience as a faculty member and higher education administrator, and thirteen years' experience advocating for and providing legal counsel, supporting human rights initiatives, having worked in health and human rights, sexual and reproductive rights, and health, gender justice, and environmental justice. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2M.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2N is a resolution to appoint Roblyn Meeks as professional school senior associate dean for academic affairs at Macaulay Honors College. She has over twenty years of experience in the administration of academic affairs with a record of accomplishment in design, development, and implementation broadly varied academic programs. Dr. Meeks previously served as associate dean, School of Professional, and Continuing Studies at Fordham, where she oversaw the school's Lincoln Center campus operations. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2M.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 2N has been approved.
Item 2O is a resolution to appoint Nancy Sanchez as vice president for institutional advancement at Kingsborough Community College, with more than twenty years of progressive leadership experience and expertise in improving college experience among first-generation underserved and underrepresented students, collaborative partnerships with colleges, corporations, and community-based organizations, donors, and individuals by focusing on fundraising and funding policies that practices and practices that address diversity, equity, and access. Previously served as executive director of Kaplan Education Foundation, which focused on community college students from historically underrepresented backgrounds. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2O for your approval.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 2O has been approved.
Item 2P is a resolution to appoint Marling Sohn as vice president of Enrollment Management and Student Affairs at New York City College of Technology. Dr. Sohn has served as interim vice president of Enrollment Management at City Tech, providing visionary, innovative, and student-focused leadership and supervision to eighteen operational areas. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2P.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 2P has been approved.
Item 2Q is a resolution to appoint Alexis McLean as vice president of Student Affairs at LaGuardia Community College. Previously served as dean of students at Medgar Ever's College since 2018. Prior to that, she served as associate director of special programs leading to the administration of the Percy E. Sutton Seek Program from September 2017 until July 2018. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2Q.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 2Q has been approved.
Item 2R is a resolution to approve New York State Paid Parental Leave Program for Eligible Executive Compensation Plan and Classified Managerial Employees. On January ten of this year, Governor Hochul announced the New York State Paid Parental Leave Program, which provides paid parental leave for unclassified and underrepresented New York State executive branch employees. The guidelines in the New York State Paid Parental Leave Program are outlined in the in New York State's attendance and leave manual policy bulletin 2023-01, and the New York Office of State Controllers, State Agencies Payroll Bulletin Number 2126. Accordingly, I move approval of item 2R.
Do I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2S is a resolution to appoint Reni Sarmiento as vice chancellor for enrollment management at City University of New York. Reni Sarmiento is appointed interim vice chancellor by the Board of Trustees on March twenty-one, 2022, and in that capacity has closely coordinated enrollment activities, including CUNY Reconnect Program, which exceeded a 10,000-student enrollment goal by enrolling close to 17,000 students. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2S.
Do I have a second for that item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2T is a resolution to appoint Dorian Gloria as senior vice chancellor of university human resources and labor relations at the City University of New York. She has served as City University of New York's vice chancellor and chief human resources officer since 2019, leading university human resources, which comprises, as you know, payroll, civil service support, advisory services, professional development and learning, recruitment and diversity, benefits, program management, and central office human resources. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2T.
Do I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 2T has been approved.
Item 2U is a resolution to appoint Stephen Snyder as associate vice chancellor for university human resources and labor relations at City University of New York. He has been assistant vice chancellor for university human resources since April of Served in a variety of HR- 2022. Served in a variety of HR positions here and in Hawaii, as in American Samoa and the Mariana Islands. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I present item two U for the board's approval.
To me?
If you like.
Do I have a second for that item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
And you thought you were going to get away without us working you, did you? Thank you, trustee. Let me now call on Committee on Education Policy Chair Jill O'Donnell Tormey to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Education Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on June fifth, 2023, which I will now present. Item three A one is a resolution to transfer the degree granting authority for the doctor of audiology program from the CUNY Graduate School and University Center to Brooklyn College. The transfer of the degree granting authority for this program will support both the Graduate Center's plan to focus on traditional academic doctoral and master's programs and Brooklyn College's plan to become a both a Carnegie R three doctoral granting institution, as well as a pipeline for students interested in careers in healthcare. Mr. Chairman, I present item three A one for board consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item three A two is a resolution to establish a program in nursing education leading to the master of science degree at Hunter College. The proposed program will address the nursing faculty shortage and will complement Hunter's new nursing PhD program by providing opportunities for students to teach without the additional research demands of the PhD program. Mr. Chairman, I present item three A two for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item three A three is a resolution to establish a program in African diaspora literature leading to the Bachelor of Arts degree in Medgar Evers College. The proposed program dovetails well with the university's Black Race and Ethnic Studies Initiative and would represent the first bachelor's degree program at CUNY that is entirely focused on the literature of the African diaspora. The programs will encourage students to engage in co-curriculum and extracurriculum programs through existing and developing partnerships with various centers and institutes at Medgar Evers College and throughout the university. Mr. Chairman, I present item three A three for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item three B one is a resolution to appoint Dave Chosky, M.D., with immediate tenure at the City College of New York with a waiver of bylaw six point two, six point two point B. Dr. Chosky is an extraordinary scholar and practitioner who has held prominent leadership roles in the realm of public health and has contributed mightily to the New York City and the nation. For example, as the forty-third commissioner of New York City's Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, Dr. Chosky led the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, including a historic campaign to vaccinate over six million New Yorkers, saving tens of thousands of lives. Mr. Chairman, I present item three B one for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item three B two is a resolution to award Phyllis Curtis Tweed with immediate tenure at the Queensborough Community College with an application of bylaw six two B. Dr. Curtis Tweed's teaching experience, scholarship, publications, and consistent commitment and dedication to furthering student success will elevate Queens Community College to the forefront of theory and practice in higher education. She is the commissioner-elect of the New England Commission for Higher Education and is the successful candidate from a nationwide search for provost and vice president of academic affairs at Queens Community College, the appointment for which has also been recommended to the Board of Trustees. Mr. Chairman, I present item three B two for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Items three C one through C three eight are resolutions to award early tenure to faculty at various campuses with an application of bylaw six point two C two. The candidates have professional records that exceed the expectations of faculty being considered for tenure and promotion. Mr. Chairman, I present items three C one through C three eight for the board's consideration.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items have been approved.
Item three D is a resolution to appoint Vanessa Botello as associate professor at the Graduate School of Journalism with a waiver of bylaw eleven point five B. Vanessa Botello is an expert on broadcast journalism and is the recipient of multiple awards, including two Emmys. She has a consistent record of professional experience, teaching, and service to the Newmark School, who is committed to helping educate and launch the next generation of diverse journalists. Mr. Chairman, I present item three D for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Items three E one through three E six are resolutions to appoint distinguished professors. In presenting the nominees, the colleges seek to recognize the exceptional scholarly achievements of the following faculty members: From Brooklyn College, Jason Eckhart and David Grubbs of the Department of Music; from Hunter College, Sarit Golab of the Department of Psychology; from the Graduate School of Journalism, Masha Gessen; from the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, Renee Goodwin and Terry Wong. Mr. Chairman, I present items three E one through three E six for the board's consideration.
You have a second for these items?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items have been approved.
Item three F is a resolution requesting the approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. The June report was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First, the university's system of record, between March twenty-seventh, 2023 and May seventh, 2023. It includes appointments and reappointments with tenure and fellowship leaves. Mr. Chairman, I present item three F for the board's consideration.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item three G is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the curriculum and academic policy dashboard. The report includes routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program. Mr. Chairman, I present item three G for the board's consideration.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number four, Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. Let me now call on Committee on Advancement and External Affairs Vice Chair Sandra Wilkin to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee for Advancement and External Affairs considered the following matters at its meeting on June fifth, 2023, which I will now present to the board. Item four A is a resolution to name the Black and Schwartz Science Program Center at the CUNY Graduate Center. Brian B. Schwartz was a valued faculty member of the physics program at the CUNY Graduate Center and served as vice president of research and sponsored programs from nineteen ninety-nine to 2010. Brian Schwartz and Terry Black have pledged a gift of $150,000 to the CUNY Graduate Center Foundation Incorporated to support special initiatives and academic programming. Mr. Chairman, I present item four A for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four B is a resolution to accept a gift from the estate of Sheila Charney to Hunter College. Sheila Charney graduated from Hunter College in nineteen sixty-one and bequeathed $50,000 to Hunter College to be used for general purposes. Mr. Chairman, I present item four B for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four C is a resolution to name the Floria Dance Studio at Hunter College. Floria Lasky was a member of the Hunter College class of nineteen forty-two. The founding chair of the Board of Trustees of the Hunter College Foundation Incorporated, an influential lawyer in theater world who represented Frederick Lowe and trustee of the Frederick Lowe Foundation. The Frederick Lowe Foundation has agreed to contribute $500,000 to the Hunter College Foundation Incorporated to fund the renovation and outfitting of the North Dance Studio on the sixth floor of Thomas Hunter Hall at Hunter College and to honor Floria Lasky by naming the studio The Floria. Mr. Chairman, I present item four C for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four D is a resolution to name the Dr. John Henrik Clark Studio Lounge at Hunter College. Dr. John Henrik Clark was one of the most significant contributors to the development of African and African-American studies in American colleges and universities. Dr. Clark joined the faculty of the college as a lecturer in nineteen sixty-nine, founded the Department of Black and Puerto Rican Studies in nineteen seventy, rose to full professor, and served as the department chair until nineteen eighty-five, at which time he was named professor emeritus until his death in nineteen ninety-eight. The Whistlerian chapter of the Hunter College Alumni Association have pledged $100,000 to the Hunter College Foundation Incorporated to be used for expenses, operations, renovation, and maintenance of a study space in the Leon and Toby Cooperman Library at Hunter College in honor of Dr. Clark to be named the Dr. John Henrik Clark Study Lounge. Mr. Chairman, I present item four D for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
No.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four E is a resolution to name the Jennifer J. Rabb Career Center in the Leon and Toby Cooperman Library at Hunter College. Leon and Toby Cooperman are longtime benefactors of Hunter College and has, through the Leon and Toby Cooperman Foundation, contributed $2 million to the Hunter College Foundation Incorporated to support the design and construction of the state-of-the-art Career Center on the second floor of the Leon and Toby Cooperman Library at Hunter College. Stanley and Judith Zabar, class of fifty-four, are talented artists and have been visionary supporters of young artists and historians at Hunter College and have joined Leon and Toby Cooperman in support of the Career Center by contributing $400,000 to Hunter College Foundation Incorporated. The Career Center will house the Career Development Services Office and provide students with a robust range of support for their future careers, including career counseling, job search, and interview support, workshops, and other assistance. The stipulation of the Coopermans and the Zabars' gift is that the Career Center be named the Jennifer J. Rabb Career Center to recognize President Jennifer J. Rabb's transformative leadership during her twenty-two years as president of Hunter College and her legacy of advancing the careers of thousands of college students and alumni. Mr. Chairman, I present item four D for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this. Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four F and a resolution to name the last mile Cecile Byrne Endowed Scholarship Fund at Lehman College. Cecile Byrne is a proud alumna of Hunter College in the Bronx, which was renamed Lehman College in nineteen sixty-eight and graduated in nineteen sixty-eight with a BA in mathematics. Because of a deep appreciation for the education she received, Ms. Byrne pledged of the $101,024.47 to the Herman H. Lehman College Foundation to establish the last mile Cecile Byrne Endowed Scholarship Fund to provide scholarship support to undergraduate students pursuing a degree in nursing education from Lehman College. Recipients of the college will be students who have experienced a financial shortfall in the last semester of their senior year and cannot graduate and realize their dream of completing a college degree without financial support. Mr. Chairman, I present item four F for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I now call on Committee for Facilities Planning and Management Vice Chair Sandra Wilkin to present and move the following items. You're back on.
Okay. My pleasure. Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at its meeting on June fifth, 2023, which I will now present to the board. Item five A is a resolution to authorize an extension of the existing one-year lease and revisions to the transaction documents at the new dormitory at 569 Lexington Avenue, New York for Baruch College and Hunter College. In August 2023 pursuant to a resolution adopted, January ten, 2022, CUNY entered into a one-year lease with Hawkins Way to provide for dorm space at 569 Lexington Avenue while the transaction documents for the lease whole condominium were finalized, reviewed, and approved by the New York State Attorney General and registered with the New York State Controller. Due to changes to the purchase and sale agreement and associated condominium documents to reflect the new requirements from the Department of Finance, the transaction documents need to be revised and resubmitted to the Attorney General and State Controller. An extension to the one-year lease is required to provide for continued dorm operations at 569 Lexington Avenue. This resolution will authorize the General Counsel to sign and deliver the one-year lease extension and the revisions to the transaction documents and states that any further changes will be submitted for board approval. Mr. Chairman, I present five A for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item five B is a resolution to approve site excavation at 1186 Carroll Street for Medgar Evers College. CUNY and the New York City School Construction Authority entered into a non-binding term sheet for the joint development of a facility at 1186 Carroll Street, under which the SCA will construct 60,000 square feet of core and shell space for CUNY on the site, and SCA will continue and fit out 59,820 square feet of space for its own use. A construction license agreement will allow for pre-construction excavation work to advance at the Carroll Street site while the core and shell designs are finalized and a development agreement and lease are negotiated with the SCA for the project. This resolution will authorize the General Counsel to sign and deliver the license agreement and states that any further changes will be submitted for board approval. Mr. Chairman, I present item five B for the board's consideration.
You have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5C is a resolution to authorize construction for Performing Arts Center HVAC replacement at your college. The York Performing Arts Center HVAC Replacement Project will replace the facility's HVAC system that has reached the end of its useful life. The Performance Arts Center is approximately 34,500 square feet. The project will bring the HVAC system for this space into a state of good repair. Construction managed by DASNY is anticipated to commence in July 2023 and be substantially complete by October 2024. The program management agreement requires DASNY to comply with and report on the applicable MWBE and STVLE goals. The board requests CUCF to provide capital funding in an amount up to $14,130,130. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for double duty. Item 6, I mean now Committee on Student Life, I call on Committee on Student Life Chair Una Clark to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Trustees' Student Life considered the following matters at its meeting on June 5, 2023, which I will now present to the board for approval. Item 6A is a resolution to approve undergraduate student activities fee increase at Brooklyn College. Students at Brooklyn College held a referendum to increase the undergraduate student activities fee from $114.85 to $120 for the fall and spring semesters and $78.95 to $80 for the summer session effective fall of 2023. The referendum was held on Monday, March 20, 2023, through Friday, March 31, 2023. The vote on the referendum was 485 in favor, 139 opposed, 244 abstained, with 8% of the eligible students not voting. The earmarking to the allocation of the bodies are set forth in the schedule after approval by the Board of Trustees may not be changed by further Board of Trustees action. Local earmarkings at the college are also set forth above each of the student activity fee schedules. The local earmarking have been established and are subject to change at the college in accordance with the referendum process set forth by the Board of Trustees by law, section 1612, provided there is no change in the total fee. The earmarkings set forth in the resolution may only be changed by further Board of Trustees action. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I wanted to say that the only reason I am in favor of this resolution is because it's a $6 increase carefully broken down. That puts a lot of accountability into it, and all the money is going back to the students directly. And from what I'm calculating, it's only, it's stipulated that it's only $10.50 that is going into SGA operating funds, which I think is very reasonable for a $6 increase.
Okay. And also the fact that the students held a referendum and approved it also, which is hugely important. Any other discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain in accordance to my original vote. I'd like to be consistent that, okay.
That's fine. That'll be recorded.
Item 6B is a resolution to approve Graduate Division Student Activities Fee Increase at Brooklyn College. The graduate student at Brooklyn College held a referendum to increase the graduate student activities fee from $75.70 to $100.70 for fall and spring semesters and $61.45 to $66.45 for summer session effective fall 2023. The referendum was held on Monday, March 20, 2023, through Friday, March 31, 2023. The vote on the referendum was 187 in favor, seven opposed, and eight abstained, with 8% of the eligible students not voting. The earmarking to the allocating bodies were set forth in the schedule once approved by the Board of Trustees may only be changed by further Board of Trustees action. Local earmarkings at college are also set forth in each of the student activities fee schedules. The local earmarkings have been established and are subject to change at the college in accordance with the referendum process set forth by the Board of Trustees by law, section 1612, provided there is no change to the local fee. The earmarkings are set forth in the resolution may also be changed by further Board of Trustees action. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion?
Yes. Now, I have concerns about this one because we have a significant increase. It's about almost $25, and we have $35 in this referendum that we don't know that what it will go to. So the breakdown has $35 that are kind of hanging in the air, and I'm not comfortable with that. It is the students' decision, and I think the students want to know if they are going to pay an additional $25, what is the $35 that spending going to go to? The Brooklyn College undergraduate increase tells us that it's only going to be $10.50 for operating costs. I'm not sure, I'm not clear if this $35 is also going into operating costs. And during the committee meeting, I asked for clarification that I am not getting in this resolution.
By the way, just as far as clarification was requested, how come it hasn't been provided? If I might ask?
Was requested.
I guess during committee meetings.
Clarification about the specific $35. I also inquired about when the activity fees had been increased last time. The graduate activity fees has been increased in June 22, 2009, the last time, and the undergrads in 2019. So I'm not clear about the $35.
Just to be clear, we never received an actual request that I'm aware of, so my apologies for that.
It was to the students. Yeah, to the students during their presentation. Yeah, it wasn't sent to, it was on the record to the students. Yeah.
Sure, we had ongoing discussion at the meeting concerning what the allocation would go for and whether, in fact, the students all were able to pay the fee. There was discussion whether some students voted and others did not, which is why I abstained because it didn't seem forthcoming at the meeting, and we were supposed to get additional information concerning, you know, the fee both for graduate and undergraduate
We have the president of Brooklyn College. He might have some answers if we want to do that.
If you do, but I mean, at the same point, what I would probably suggest is, you know, given the fact that it had been requested, we'd probably just lay this item over. It's a small item. We should probably just lay this over next opportunity unless this is going to create a, that's, then that's fine.
I wouldn't be, that the request wasn't committed back to me. My apologies.
Not at all. All right, then I'm going to suggest that we lay this, I'll make a motion that we lay this item over.
I respectfully ask that it be laid over until there are real understanding as to the students because some, it seems to us at the meeting, only because the students were also demonstrating, so, the students were so demonstrating for other reasons, we did not, so I would, I would suggest that we get more clarification from the Student Affairs Office concerning.
A motion to layover has been made and seconded.
I second it.
All right, as I said, it's, all of those in favor? Items laid over. I believe that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not at all, and I think that concludes your report. Thank you, trustee. Item 7 is a resolution to appoint Bruce Weber as vice president as the Willam Coker, Dean of the Zicklin School of Business at Baruch College. I'd like to move item number 7. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved. Item 8 is a resolution to appoint Ann Kirshner as interim president and Hunter College. I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved. Item 9 is a resolution of appreciation for trustee Ferrer. I would like to move item number 9.
Can we table that?
All right, we'll show no appreciation for you.
I will not second.
May I have a second for that item? I think it's unanimous seconding. Any discussion on the item? Chair's privilege. We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That was good. That item's been approved unanimously. The chancellor has asked the board to consider nine additional resolutions. I will ask the secretary to read each resolution as quickly as possible for the record, and we will first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself.
You ready? Okay. Item 10 is a resolution to appoint Timothy G. Lynch as president of the College of Staten Island. The reso is dated June 26, 2023, and reads as follows. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York appointed Timothy G. Lynch as interim president of the College of Staten Island, CSI, on December 13, 2021. And whereas during his tenure at CSI, Dr. Lynch oversaw successful middle states reaccreditation, launched the planning process for the next iteration of the institutional strategic plan, and has worked closely with local businesses and elected officials to improve fundraising and philanthropy while also providing avenues for student engagement. And whereas from 2018 to 2020, Dr. Lynch served as interim president of the Queensborough Community College, where he oversaw several successful reaccreditation efforts, including the campus middle state self-study, and implemented the campus's response to COVID-19, including a pivot to fully online education. And whereas from 2017 to 2021, Dr. Lynch was the provost and senior vice president for Academic Affairs at QCC, Queensborough, where he was responsible for all matters related to academic programming, including assessment and accreditation, as well as ensuring the school's continued trajectory of academic excellence, managing 17 academic departments and 900 faculty, and providing oversight to QCC's nationally recognized student success initiatives. And whereas Dr. Lynch previously served as the provost and vice president for Academic Affairs, the director of institutional effectiveness, and a member of the president's cabinet at SUNY Maritime College, and as a chairperson and director of maritime policy management at the California Maritime Academy, Cal State University. And whereas Dr. Lynch holds a PhD in history from the City University of New York Graduate School and University Center, and a BA in history from Brooklyn College. And whereas a committee chaired by trustee Michael Arbenini led a nationwide search and recommended Dr. Lynch as one of the finalists for the presidency of the College of Staten Island. And whereas, after consultation with various stakeholders, the chancellor is recommending Timothy G. Lynch as the president of the College of Staten Island. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the appointment of Timothy G. Lynch as president of the College of Staten Island effective July 1, 2023, with an annual salary of $330,000, subject to financial ability. The explanation is as follows. Dr. Lynch is an award-winning historian and scholar whose research interests focus on immigration and ethnicity and on American maritime history and America's relationship with the sea. He's developed numerous courses over his academic career, which includes nearly two decades in teaching at the collegiate level. The chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
All right, I'd like to move a resolution to add item number 9 to our agenda. Do I have a second? All right, those in favor of adding the item? Any opposed or abstentions? The item has been added, and now I'd like to take a vote on item 9 itself. I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the item?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee.
I just wanted first to thank you for allowing me to conduct this search and chair the search. Some of you may already be aware, I'm a proud Staten Islander. This search meant a lot to me, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the students, faculty, and alumni who served with me. I'd especially like to thank trustee Vivalo and Dr. Vazani, and especially Lehman President Delgado for their leadership and guidance. Mr. Chancellor, I believe you made an excellent decision here, not just for Staten Island but for CUNY, even if you allowed another person to tie your record of running a community college and a senior college. Tim Lynch is CUNY. He's a first-generation college student. He got his bachelor's and doctorate at CUNY, lives and breathes CUNY's mission. And the last year and a half, he has steered the ship at CSI brilliantly. Like some people from Queens and Brooklyn, he is a Staten Islander now. As Staten Island's only public institution of higher learning, President Lynch understands the sacred trust enshrined on that campus, and his town-to-gown focus will serve CSI students as well as Staten Island itself. I'm excited to continue working with Timothy Lynch as president of the College of Staten Island. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, and let me thank you for your services, chair of that committee. Thank you so much. Any other discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 11 is a resolution to appoint Lisa Braverman as dean of the CUNY School of Professional Studies. The resolution is dated June 26, 2023, whereas Dr. Lisa Braverman is currently assistant vice president of Workforce Community Programs at Mercy College, where she is responsible for the strategy, promotion, and implementation of career-ready programs in the new division for adults and working professionals at an HSI college, Hispanic-serving institution. And whereas from 2020 to 2022, Dr. Braverman was vice provost for academic and faculty support Excelsior, an all-online institution where she forged a new bilingual degree completion program for Latinx adult learners in career-bound degree areas. And whereas from 2016 to 2020, Dr. Braverman was dean and assistant professor at the Anthony J. Petracelli School of Continuing Studies at Fairleigh Dickinson University, where she led an organization with 50 full-time and 250 part-time faculty, as well as five graduate, three undergraduate, and several non-degree pre-college and dual enrollment programs offered online and in hybrid and off-campus formats throughout the region and internationally. And whereas from 2011 to 2013, Dr. Braverman served as associate provost for adult programs at Long Island University, designing and implementing new blended degree programs that uniquely serve the region's returning adult learners. And whereas Dr. the region's returning adult learners, and whereas Dr. Braverman holds a PhD in Spanish and Latin American Studies from New York University and a BA from Brandeis University, and was accepted into the Harvard University Graduate School of Education Institute for Management, Leadership, and Education, and whereas a committee chaired by trustee Henry Berger led a nationwide search, beginning and recommended Dr. Braverman as one of the finalists for the position of Dean of the CUNY School of Professional Studies, and whereas after consultation with various SBS stakeholders, the chancellor is recommending Lisa Braverman as the next dean, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees appoint Lisa Braverman as the Dean of the School of Professional Studies, effective August 21, 2023, with an annual salary of $280,000, subject to financial ability, the explanation is as follows, an advocate for lifelong learning with a commitment to increasing equity and access to higher education, Dr. Braverman is a dynamic leader, innovator, and academic entrepreneur who combines rigorous academic training with solid business skills in developing a vast array of public continuing, online, and professional education programs, the chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
I'd like to make a motion to add item number 11 to our agenda. Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote, all of those in favor of adding this item? Any opposed or abstentions? The item has been added, I'd like to now move item number 11, may I have a second? Any discussion on the item?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to thank the 12 members of the search committee who joined me in the search, they worked amazingly hard, we had a very good, broad group of candidates to choose from, and Lisa Braverman stood out, SBS is at an inflection point, as the rest of the university expands its online offerings, SBS still holds a special place for adult learners, continuing education, and online service, Lisa Braverman's experience, as you heard, is broad across this entire area, and her emphasis on workforce development will really help SBS as it moves forward, I think, so I am really proud that we could recommend her, that the chancellor is recommending her, and I asked the board to confirm her appointment.
Any other, any other discussion on this item? And trustee, let me thank you for your services, the Chair of this committee, thank you so much. With no other discussion, I'd like to move item number 11, do I have a second? Again, we already did that, my bad. We'll go to a vote, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 12 is a resolution to appoint Milton Santiago as interim President of Bronx Community College, the reso is dated June 26, 2023, and reads as follows, whereas Milton Santiago has an expansive portfolio of experience that includes senior-level appointments in administration and finance, institutional advancement, and government and community relations, and higher education institutions both within and outside the City University of New York, the university, and is currently serving as the interim Vice President of Administration and Finance at Bronx Community College, where he provides leadership to a complex division with a dual mission of service and compliance, and whereas Dr. Santiago was previously Vice President of Administration at Duchess Community College of the State University of New York, where he provided supervision for administrative and operational areas, including human resources, public safety, facilities, and information technology, and whereas from 2015 to 2016, Dr. Santiago served as interim Vice President for Continuing Education and Workforce Development at the School of Continuing Education and Professional Studies at Lehman College, where, among other accomplishments, he secured New York City Council funding to establish an information technology incubator, established a public-private partnership to develop a coding academy for the development of virtual and augmented reality applications, and developed an incubator for international entrepreneurs, and whereas from 2014 to 2015, Dr. Santiago is the interim Director of External and Government Relations at Lehman College, where he developed a legislative agenda, which included capital requests, as well as member items to the Borough President, City Council, state, and federal elected officials in the central office, and whereas Dr. Santiago's administrative experience also includes positions such as Vice President for Finance Administration at the College of Staten Island, Vice President for Administration and Finance at Westfield State University, Assistant Vice President of External Affairs and Advancement at Lehman College, and Vice President of Administration and Finance at Bunker Hill Community College, and whereas Dr. Santiago holds an EDD, in Higher Education Leadership Administration from the University of Massachusetts-Boston, and an MSW from the New York University Graduate School of Social Work, and a BA in Sociology and Latin American Studies from Binghamton University, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the appointment of Milton Santiago as interim President of Bronx Community College, effective August 21, 2023, with an annual salary of $270,000, subject to financial ability, the explanation reads as follows, the appointment of Dr. Santiago as interim President will ensure that critical work continues uninterrupted during the search for the next president of Bronx Community College, the chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
I'd like to make a motion to add item 12 to our agenda, do I have a second? Item, all of those in favor? Item 12 has been added, I'd like to move item number 12, may I have a second for that? Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Item 12 has been approved.
Item 13 is a resolution to appoint Luis Montenegro as interim Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs at Bronx Community College, the resolution is dated today, June 26, 2023, and reads as follows, whereas Luis Montenegro has been serving as Dean, Academic Affairs at Bronx Community College since 2015, during which time he has overseen the expansion of professional development programs such as high flex instruction, hybrid course development, and online course development for full-time and part-time faculty, coordinated the annual conference on community college excellence, and supervised institutional grants to provide academic and career support for students enrolled in career and technical programs, and whereas from 2018 to 2020, Dr. Montenegro served as interim Provost and Vice President for BCC, where he managed an annual divisional budget of $42 million in tax levy funds and over $1 million in grant funds while overseeing 15 academic departments, with over 260 full-time faculty and 300 adjunct faculty, and maintained divisional responsibility for three associate and arts degrees, 13 associate and science degrees, 17 associate and applied science degrees, and eight certificate programs, along with 25 options in some of the degree programs, and whereas from 2012 to 2014, Dr. Montenegro was the interim Associate Dean for Curriculum and Faculty Development at BCC, implementing the Pathways Initiative with 100-plus courses approved for inclusion in the Common Core, revising all associate degree programs, coordinating an opt-in process for continuing students, and overseeing the approval of a new ASBS Joint Degree Program with the City College of New York in Biotechnology, and the development of a new certificate in community health, and whereas Dr. Montenegro earned a PhD in Physics from the CUNY Graduate School and University Center, an MA in Physics from the City College of New York, and a BS in Physics from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the appointment of Luis Montenegro as interim Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs at Bronx Community College, effective July 1, 2023, with an annual salary of $196,115,000, subject to financial ability, the explanation is as follows, Dr. Montenegro has a proven track record of successfully leading the Office of Academic Affairs and BCC through the last decade, has established strong relationships at the college and throughout the university, Dr. Montenegro's specialized qualifications and vast institutional knowledge make him uniquely qualified to serve in this role, the president highly recommends this appointment with a search waiver.
I'd like to make a motion to add item number 13 to our agenda, do I have a second? Item 13, well, I guess we need to vote, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved and added, I'd like to now move item number 13, may I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 14 is a resolution of appreciation for Thomas A. Isakunagbe, dated June 26, 2023, whereas Thomas Isakunagbe was appointed President of Bronx Community College, the college by the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York on June 29, 2015, and whereas President Isakunagbe has an outstanding administrative teaching and leadership record that spans nearly 40 years at both two-year and four-year institutions of higher education, having held teaching and administrative positions at the Institute of Continuing Education and Benin City, Nigeria, Hudson County Community College, Coastal University, Sussex County Community College, and Cumberland County College, and whereas President Isakunagbe secured $193 million in capital funds and public grants for projects like the Gould Memorial Library renovation, and also oversaw the expansion at the College of the acclaimed accelerated study and associates programs ASAP, which helped associate degree-seeking students graduate as quickly as possible, and launched new academic programs in areas like cybersecurity and networking, and whereas the National Science Foundation, the NSF, awarded the College a $5 million grant for scholarships in science, technology, engineering, and math at the STEM, one of the largest grants of its kind that the NSF has awarded to a community college, and whereas President Isakunagbe graduated from the University of Nigeria with a Bachelor's in Science with honors in Biology, and received three graduate degrees from Indiana State University, including an MS in Science Education and Education Studies and Curriculum and Instruction, and a PhD in Curriculum and Instruction, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to Dr. Thomas A. Isakunagbe for his leadership, tireless dedication, and outstanding service to Bronx Community College and the City University of New York, explanation is as follows, the City University of New York wishes to thank President Isakunagbe for his years of service to Bronx Community College and the City University of New York, and wish him well in his future endeavors.
I'd like to make a motion to add item 14 to our agenda, do I have a second? All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? I now move item number 14, may I have a second? Any discussion on the item? Absolutely.
Just want to thank Thomas for eight great years of service, nobody cared more about those busy students.
Thank you for allowing me to be on the record.
Absolutely, thank you. Any further discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved. Thank you, Thomas.
Item 15 is a resolution of appreciation for Jennifer J. Rab, the resolution is dated June 26, 2023, and reads as follows, whereas in June 2022, Jennifer J. Rab marked her 21st year as President of Hunter College, and has led its successful transformation from an open admissions institution to a selective, highly-ranked college, and whereas under her leadership, graduation and retention rates have risen markedly, and hundreds of Hunter students have earned prestigious awards, including 88 Fulbright, two Rhodes, two Marshall, two Truman, five Schwartzman, five Luce, and seven Goldwater Scholarships, along with six Soros Fellowships, and whereas since Ms. Rab assumed the presidency in 2001, Hunter has significantly increased its government grants and awards, while raising more than $530 million in private support for the college, and whereas most recently, she helped broker a $52 million gift from Leonard Lauder, the largest gift given to a single institution at the City University of New York, and whereas her Mother's Day Scholarship Program launched in 2005, as a way to celebrate the thousands of mothers, grandmothers, aunts, and sisters who were Hunter grads, has raised more than $9 million in scholarship funds for Hunter students, and whereas during President Rab's tenure, the Hunter faculty secured more than $1 billion in research awards and grants, providing hundreds of students with life-changing exposure to lab and field science, and whereas Hunter's research contributed to many scientific fields, including astronomy, climate change, and community health, and medicine, and affected cancer treatments while playing a major role in helping end the HIV epidemic, and whereas under President Rab's leadership, Hunter launched a $50 million library renovation, built a floor in the new Belfer Research Building at Wild Cornell Medical College, constructed $131 million School of Social Work in East Harlem, added a new facility in TriBeCa for Hunter's renowned graduate art program and gallery, purchased and renovated a townhouse on East 67th Street to house Hunter's theater department, and completed the $25 million restoration of the historic 1908 Roosevelt House on East 65th Street, now the Roosevelt House Public Policy Institute at Hunter College, and whereas Ms. Rab is a graduate of Hunter College High School, received a BA from Cornell University, an MPA from Princeton, and a JD from Harvard Law School, and whereas in 2016, President Rab's achievements were recognized per her election to the American Academy of Arts and Sciences, and in 2022, she was awarded the Gold Honor Medal for Distinguished Service to Society and Humanity by the National Institute of Social Sciences, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to Jennifer J. Rab for her leadership, tireless dedication, and outstanding service to the Hunter College community and the City University of New York, the explanation is as follows, the City University of New York wishes to thank President Rab for her many years of service to Hunter College and the City University of New York, and wish her well in her future endeavors.
I'd like to make a motion to add item 15 to our agenda, do I have a second? I'd like to add, all of those, I'd like to vote on this, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Item 15 has been added, I'd like to now move item 15, may I have a second for that? Any discussion on the item?
May I again? Just for the record, as someone that was at Hunter as faculty when President Rab came in and had the chance to be with her as a fellow president, and also worked in the central office, thank her for 22 years of great dedication and service to Hunter, and clearly Hunter is a different place after those 22 years, and to wish her the very best in the next stage of her professional and personal life, so, thanks.
Any other discussion on the item? All right, let's now move to a vote, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 16 is a resolution of appreciation for Jorge Silvaporas, and it's dated June 26, 2023, and reads as follows, whereas on May 24, 2021, the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, the university, appointed Jorge Silvaporas as interim Dean of the CUNY School of Professional Studies, CUNY SBS, and whereas during Mistress Silvaporas' tenure, the university invested $8 million in federal stimulus funds to develop CUNY Online, the initiative to build online degree capacity at the university and produce high-quality online courses and programs, and whereas Mr. Silvaporas also helped to launch the CUNY SBU U.S. Military Bachelor's Degree Completion Scholarship, offered to eligible active-duty and reserve military students, providing undergraduate students with financial assistance for their cost of attending college, and whereas Jorge Silvaporas is a former distinguished lecturer of business at Hostos Community College at the City University of New York, and has also taught at Universidad del Sagrado Corazon and New York University, and whereas Mr. Silvaporas holds an MBA from the University of Texas at Austin, the Red Macomb School of Business, a JD from the Universidad de Puerto Rico, and a BA in Political Science and Economics from Yale University, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to Jorge Silvaporas for his leadership and service to the CUNY School of Professional Studies and the City University of New York, the explanation is as follows, the City University of New York wishes to thank interim Dean Silvaporas for his service to the CUNY School of Professional Studies and the City University of New York, and wish him well in his future endeavors.
I'd like to make a motion to add item 16 to our agenda, may I have a second? Any discussion on it? We'll now add, vote to add it, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Item 16 has been added, I'd like to move item number 16, may I have a second? Any discussion on the item?
May I? Thank you. And again, on the record, to thank interim Dean Silvaporas for two years of really great service, getting us going with CUNY Online, when there was a critical project for the university, being very innovative in his tenure over at SBS, and you know, not always easy to be interim, but he did a very good job, and we wish him the very best in his next professional endeavors too, so I want to thank Jorge for his work.
All right. Any other discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote, all of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 17 is a resolution to appoint Claudia Lindau as interim Vice President of Finance Administration at York College, where the resolution is dated June 26, 2023, and reads as follows, whereas Claudia Lindau has over 25 years of progressively increasing experience managing academic technology, information technology, operations- operations, and business operations. And whereas, Mr. Lindau currently serves as the Assistant Vice President and Chief Information Officer at York College, providing leadership to a range of resources and services in support of the college's student success mission and strategic plan. And whereas, Mr. Lindau works in partnership with the President, Vice Presidents, Assistant Vice Presidents, Deans, and other campus leadership to plan, assess, and set the direction for all matters involving technology across divisions. And whereas, Mr. Lindau currently leads campus efforts involving return on investment analysis and financial governance transparency, provides leadership and oversight on all information technology resources, and supports teaching, learning, and research efforts. And whereas, Mr. Lindau leads process improvement initiatives on campus and leads the planning and execution of five-point-nine million dollars of capital projects. And whereas, Mr. Lindau received an MBA in Management and Information Systems, an MS in Computer Science, and a BS in Computer Science, all from Long Island University, and a BS in Information Systems from Nueva Espada University. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the appointment of Claudia Lindau as Interim Vice President of Finance and Administration at York College, effective July six, 2023, with an annual salary of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, subject to financial ability. The explanation is as follows: The appointment of Mr. Lindau as Interim Vice President will ensure that critical work of York College continues uninterrupted while the search is conducted. The President highly recommends this appointment.
I'd like to make a motion to add item seventeen to our agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moving that to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been added. I'd now make a motion to, to move item seventeen. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item eighteen is a resolution to appoint Cynthia King Vance as Interim Vice President of Strategic Initiatives at Hunter College. The resolution is dated June twenty-six, 2023, and reads as follows: Whereas Cynthia King Vance is a longtime member of the City University of New York University community, and was most recently advisor to the university dean of continuing education and workforce development from 2018 to 2020, and an adjunct professor of entrepreneurship and economics at Hunter College from 2015 to 2020. And whereas, from 2011 to 2018, Ms. Vance served as a strategic advisor to the president for student success at Hunter, where she identified and deployed strategies to increase graduation and other student success outcomes at Hunter, including the Take Fifteen Credits Per Term Initiative, which was later adopted by the university, and the development of the Hunter College Business Certificate. And whereas, from 2010 to 2011, Ms. Vance served as a transition leader from the Newark, for the Newark Public Schools, where she coordinated district staff, government leaders, and philanthropists to shape operating decisions for the upcoming academic year, and lay the groundwork for future reforms during a transition between superintendents. And whereas, Ms. Vance sits on the Board of Trustees of the New York Public Radio and leads a lead and is entrepreneur in residence at the Harvard University Innovation Lab. And whereas, Ms. Vance holds an MBA from Harvard Business School and a BA from the Princeton University Woodrow Wilson School of Public and International Affairs, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the appointment of Cynthia King Vance as Interim Vice President of Strategic Initiatives at Hunter College, effective July one, 2023, with an annual salary of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars, subject to financial ability. Explanation: The appointment of Ms. Vance will ensure that critical work of Hunter College continues uninterrupted during the search for the next president of Hunter College. The Chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
Make a motion to add item eighteen to our agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Let's now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item eighteen has been added to our agenda. I would now like to move item eighteen. May I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved. There being no further business, I ask for a motion. All right, let me make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Congratulations, Frank.[1797.28]